Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session for August the 7th. If you have any cell phones, please put them on silent ring. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lainer?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here. If you all stand for the pledge, please. I'll be praying first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I pray that we can make decisions tonight to benefit constituents of this county. I pray that the men and women who serve in our own services are out of harm's way. And I pray that each day and every day for peace. Amen.
Amen.
We've had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Mr. Vice Chair, petition of citizens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It appears that we've got about fourteen or fifteen individuals this evening. So, Pat Chilko.
Um, I appreciate you dedicating your time to public service, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I'm on behalf of the Democratic Women of Craven County and other women, including Republican women, because this is a nonpartisan issue. A goal of the Democratic Women of Craven County this year is to join with other Democratic Women and other women in North Carolina to educate and advocate for the Equal Rights Amendment, which states equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or any state on account of sex. The ERA was approved by the House, the U.S. House of Representatives in 1971 and the U.S. Senate in 1972. In 1982, unfortunately, the ERA fell short by three states of ratification. That's within the timeline that was set by Congress. However, in 1992, a major development occurred that resurrected the ERA. So it's alive again. That year, the Madison Amendment concerning congressional pay rages, wa- raises, won ratification after 203 years. The Twenty-Seventh Amendment's incorporation into the Constitution after such a long delay signals the continuing viability of the ERA. Especially since the mention of a deadline is not included in the text of the amendment. In March of this year, 2017, the courageous state of Nevada became the thirty-sixth state to ratify the ERA. The General Assembly of North Carolina has introduced SB 85 and HB 102 to ratify the ERA, but they languish in the Rules Committee, as things tend to do. They refuse to hold hearings or even consider the ERA. Sex discrimination continues to limit equal opportunity and justice for women, and the U.S. Constitution does not protect women from sex discrimination, except for the right to vote. The Supreme Court's jurisprudence requires that unequal treatment be intentional in order to be illegal. Men have rights, but women must prove our rights. We assert that when a clear pattern of disadvantage to our sex exists, with or without demonstra- demonstrable intent, women should be able to have recourse under the Constitution. Again, sex discrimination continues to limit equal opportunity and justice for women. Women and their children are the vast majority of persons in poverty in the U.S. Despite laws guaranteeing equal pay for equal work, women, on average, are paid only seventy-eight cents on the dollar that men are paid. This, uh, I'm sorry. Pregnancy is not required to be accommodated by employers. Without a foundation of economic equality, women will never be equal. Lawmakers and judges must be encouraged to include equitable consideration of female experiences as they deal with the issues of Social Security, taxes, wages, pensions, domestic relations, insurance, violence, and more. Without an Equal Rights Amendment providing motivation, the status quo will change much more slowly.
Thank you.
I'm done?
Four minutes.
Oh, well.
Ma'am, for the record, can you please state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Pat Chilko, 1707 Spencer Ave. I'm one of your people.
Yes, you are. I noticed that here.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
You all have a copy of the resolution.
Yes.
Mr. Skipper.
Good to see a lot of friendly faces I haven't seen in a while. It's good to be here. I'm here to talk about the tethering ordinance that you're considering. I want to bring a couple things to your attention. First of all, the definition that we're dealing with of household animals and the definition of hunting dogs, in my opinion, creates a conflict. Most people here are familiar with poodles, right? Household dogs are hunting dogs. Standard poodles, I have two of them, are considered gun dogs or water dogs and retrievers. If you ever watch the Crown of Duck Dynasty, Si has a poodle that he hunts. So there's a hunting dog. The flaw that I see in this right now is this. If I decide I want to take my two dogs, which are household dogs right now, and make them hunting dogs, under this, I can take them out in my yard, chain them, let them sit out there in hot sun, not feed them without any shelter, and I'm not violating this law because I choose to hunt these dogs. To me, that creates a conflict. It makes us look like a feel-good law because it's not going to do what we need to do to protect these animals. So I'm just in the, I want you to consider when you're looking at this thing, that cruelty to animals is a very important thing. I mean, we don't want to see this happen. I know y'all don't want to see this happen. But what we want to do is make sure it's defined properly so that I can't make up my mind which part of the law I want to be involved in. Because if I get arrested for it, I'm a higher lawyer, I'm gonna go there, if I'm chaining my dogs, and I'm gonna go down there, I'm gonna win this thing because it is not clear what cruelty that dog is. I've made that choice. I don't want to have to make that choice. I want it to apply to all animals. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Barbara, forgive me, Best?
Best.
Yes, thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, give an honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ, and to you gentlemen as well.
Ma'am, could you possibly introduce yourself and your address?
Okay. I'm Barbara Best, 845 Highway 55 West here in New Bern. It's located out on Highway 55 West area of New Bern. I am currently running, campaigning for the Fifth Ward City of New Bern Alderman seat. I retired from the city of New Bern with over twenty years of tax experience. So I worked with the county some because I worked along beside Mr. Ronald Antrich, who's a tax administrator. So if I'm elected in by the citizens of New Bern, I look forward to serving and working with you, the county commissioners, as well. So that's all I needed, wanted to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have listed Ben Watford and Ed Bell.
Ben Watford, 903 Shipyard Point, New Bern, North Carolina. I'm chairman of the Board of the James City Historical Society, and under the auspices of the James City Historical Society, we are building a monument for Walt Bellamy in New Bern. And the monument, the project is going to cost approximately $50,000. We've raised practically all of that money, we, with the exception of about $5,000 is what we need. But the, the site of the, of the project is in the Five Points area, just off Pollack Street, and it's in the area that Walt Bellamy grew up and lived here in North Carolina. Walt Bellamy is one of our native sons, and I think we should honor him. And now I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Ed Bell, who was a classmate of Walt Bellamy. The only difference in Walt Bellamy and myself is that he was 7' 11" and I'm 5' 7".
On behalf of Walt Bellamy Park Fundraising Memorial Project, this is a financial report to date in terms of what we have raised. At this point, from the $50,000 that, three or four years ago, we were looking forward to raising, with in-kind funds today, we are at a point of $6,000 to finish this project as of July 5th, 2017. Now, the fundraising committee in its final phase initially, uh, well, I said that before. Now, additional contribution from citizen of New Bern, Craven County, fraternity sorority organization is needed to complete the project. The fundraising committee is asking the Board of Commission for their financial support at this time. A donation of $2,000 entitled to Board of Commission to a NBA Walt Bellamy Hall of Fame eight-and-a-half-by-eleven New York Nickelbackers autograph photograph and listing in the program when we have that. Contribution to the final fundraising effort, $6,000 is tax deductible to the extent permitted by law. Now, the James City Historical Society, Inc., is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit tax entity that we are using for this project. Now, donations are mailed to the Walt Bellamy Junior Project Post Office, Box 1252, New Bern, North Carolina, 28561. Now, some highlights of Walt Bellamy. USA 1960 Gold Medal Basketball Team Rome, Italy. NBA 1963 Rookie of the Year Chicago Packers. NBA 1993 Hall of Fame New York Nickelbackers. NBA teams Baltimore Bullets, Detroit Piston, Atlanta Hawks, and the New Orleans Jazz. All-American Basketball Player, Indiana University. North Carolina State Athletic Hall of Fame. J.T. Barber High School Warrior, 1956 State AAA Football Championship End. Stranus, first African-American, 1956 Eastern State Championship End. J.T. Barber High School Warriors, 1957 Basketball Championship, third-place team center. And New Bern West Street J.T. Barber High School Athletic Hall of Fame inductee, 1998, the first of that with Caruso and, and Arum Martin. Now, the Walt Bellamy Fundraising Committee and project members, thank you for your contribution. In addition to that, Walt was my classmate, my teammate. I was captain of both team in terms of state championship, one, one, uh, one game away from winning the state in, in basketball at North Carolina State. Thank you for your time.
Just one minute. I just happened to notice that we have a, a New Bern Alderman in the ordinance. Bernard White, would you mind to stand up then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Tyker Gonzalez.
Tyker Gonzalez, 125 Turkey Quarter Creek Road, Cove City, North Carolina. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We've brought you some photos tonight that show you why we're so desperate to get this done. Please understand, we see these animals daily. You don't have to. Enclosed, you'll find a complete proposed animal cruelty ordinance for all domestic pets derived mostly from Cumberland County's actual ordinance, a copy of North Carolina Animal Cruelty Law that pertains to what we have been referencing, and a copy of the North Carolina Sporting Dog Association Incorporated Code of Ethics to show you what we are asking for is already in their standards. Recently, we were told that this board didn't know we were asking for an animal cruelty ordinance to coincide with the tethering ordinance. But in October, January, February, March, June, and July meetings, we asked for both the animal cruelty ordinance and the tethering ordinance. Via email copies of tethering and cruelty definitions were sent to the board. Multiple times, we asked to be put on the county meeting agenda in hopes of having a conversation about the issues. To date, we've been denied. We offered to have other counties who have enacted such laws to come and speak to you if we could get them on the agenda, to no avail. Right now, we have animal cruelty coverage for dogs that are deemed dangerous and potentially dangerous, yet we don't have one for pets as a whole in this county. So tonight, here is a clear, concise version of what should define animal cruelty in Craven County. Several other counties list tethering in their animal cruelty ordinance under the same reference heading. Commissioners, there are many more of us in this county that love, care for, and humanely treat our animals than those that don't, thank God. We have over a half dozen animal health groups also in this county that take much of the burden off of our shelter through adoptions, low-cost spay-neuter programs, education, and training. We are doing our part in spades with our own monetary means and through donations. What is making our job so hard is the lack of the county involvement. Are you aware that our state has a county reimbursement program through the iCare License Plate purchases for those who are low-income, who are willing to get their pets spayed and neutered? But according to the U.S. DA website, Craven County hasn't applied for it since the middle of 2015. We're now nearing the end of 2017, and we could have stopped many unwanted litters in the last two years. We could be making a major dent in these stats if we would use this program. Lastly, on the tethering ordinance, if you pass what was proposed by this board and take out the exclusion for all hunting dogs, then why should there be any tethered dog not be subject to what this board considers to be humane treatment while being tethered? Please do not add any exclusions, period. We are doing our part, but without change in this county's ordinances, getting serious to stop these issues, it will never end, and it will continue to get worse. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Nancy Daniels, 205 Batts Hill Road in New Bern. And I'm here tonight in support of the tethering ordinance. We know at least twelve counties and eight cities have ordinances in place. Why is it that Craven County can't comply? Why are we so behind? Or, as it was once stated, because it's been this way for 300 years? What a shame. If people cannot care for and protect their animals, they don't deserve them. We all know who we're talking about, negligent pet owners. Most likely, they're not here tonight. The bottom line, you've heard the facts, statistics, viewed horrific pictures, and inhumane treatment of chained animals. Make our county's ordinance stronger. Address animal care, cruelty, and neglect. Please make this right. As a supporter, do not think that this issue is going to go away. Thank you.
Russ Daniels.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Russ Daniels. I'm at 205 Batts Hill Road, and it's in New Bern. I'm still in support of the tethering ban. I've been here before. I'm not sure why we're still discussing this because it seems obvious to me that it is the right thing to do. Of the testimony that we've heard over the past months, especially the public hearing that we had last month, there's, there's one thing that's in common with those, and that is that no one admits that they were cruel to their animals. Everyone thinks they're doing the right thing. No one wants to be known or be told that they're being cruel to their animals. I think that, that people that are, that, who are guilty, as was said before, are not likely to be in one of these hearings, and they certainly weren't in the public hearing. In fact, we heard from responsible owners in the, in the public hearing, and probably in other hearings, and then tonight as well. The common thread among the documented cases of the neglect that we've seen and the cruelty that we've seen has, seems to be tethering. It doesn't matter whether the animal is a child's pet or whether it's a working dog, it still has the right and the need for shelter and proper care. You cannot specify that it doesn't need proper care just because of the purpose that you intended it. It's clear that those owners who don't know or don't care is why we, we've asked you to define these, these standards of care and living conditions, including adequate food, water, and shelter. In the past, you have been provided with the suggested standard, and you have another one in a coffee cup tonight. I think that it would be a very smart thing if you would take, it'll do a lot of the heavy lifting and the stunting for you. If you will take that and work from that, you can include a lot of it into what you need to do, no matter what your decision is. Now, I'm going to tell you, during my life, I've had no shortage of people to tell me how I couldn't do and why I couldn't do the things I wanted to do. I hope that you guys are going to be the exception and tell me how to get this done. Thanks very much.
Rhonda Heath.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Rhonda Heath. I live at 1121 Bryce's Creek Road. I am currently the president of Colonial Capital Humane Society here in New Bern. And I've been with Humane Society for over three years, and I've also done rescue for several years. So what I witnessed day-to-day is what we're here tonight to talk about with the tethering and the animal cruelty ordinance. We are very much in support of trying to tighten it up and make sure that there's a definition there for the animal cruelty and for the tethering. The cruelty in Craven County exists. It's rampant. We, excuse me, we receive numerous calls every week asking us to help animals who are tied out, exposed to the elements, without proper shelter, without food, without water. And on occasion, we might get animal control out there to help us. If we do, a lot of times, their hands are tied because they're under a loosely written law, they cannot do this, they cannot do that. We need to be able to define that, that where they can actually walk on the site and actually help that animal at that time. Right now, we, we had an instance signed the other week, the animal control officer could not walk on the property to look in the bucket to see if the water was there or not there. It was obvious the water was not there. The lady that owned the animals said that the animals die, they belonged to her husband, who had used them for hot dog fighting. He had passed away. They were, she said that she could not go out there and feed and water them, so therefore she didn't. But like I said, the laws incumbent, actually, they stopped him from being able to help these animals. The problem is real, and it needs to be addressed. Our current state laws are too loosely written and vague, allowing too much room for misinterpretation. Our intake at Colonial Capital usually consists of hounds and pit bulls. I'd say eighty percent of what we have right now in the shelter are made up of the hounds and the pit bulls. And I understand that the new tethering ordinance and the animal cruelty ordinance excludes hunting dogs. It doesn't matter what they're bred for, doesn't matter what they're used for, they're still living, breathing creatures. And they deserve justice, they deserve the chance to be, to be taken care of and to be treated just as you would want to treat your home pet, your house pet, or anyone else, or your children. I mean, a lot of people regard them just as their children. They fall prey a lot of times to the negligence and the abuse when they are discarded after their use during hunting season. Are we here to target hunters? No. A lot of people think that we are, that we're waging war on the hunters. We are not waging war on the hunters. We are waging war on the people that choose to neglect and not take of the, take care of the animals that they have. In closing, I just ask, one thing that reminded me as we were taking our pledge of allegiance is that we, we look for liberty and justice. The animals in Craven County, they deserve to have the justice too. And as far as I'm concerned, we're not providing that with the, with what we currently have as far as our tethering and animal cruelty ordinance. The most dangerous breed is human, and unfortunately, we didn't demonstrate that every day.
Thank you.
I do have, I do have one other thing, real quick, on your coffee cups that you have. You will see a, a dog named Clifford. Clifford is a prime example of a negligent owner who has just discarded this boy. He had ten percent of his blood when we took him to the vet's office. He was, um, full of internal parasites, and unfortunately, he died at the vet's office in one of my volunteers' arms. This is Penny. We currently, she's also on your coffee cup. Penny came to us with someone that had found her, and her back leg was actually very damaged. And as our vet looked at that, and he said her ankle and her knee were basically fused, and it has little muscle mass in the leg. And the injury came from her apparently either being chained up or tied with a cord around her ankle for a long period of time. And she does not have to have it amputated, but she is going to have to live with that injury for the rest of her life. So I beg and I plead with you to please look at the tethering and the animal cruelty ordinance and revamp it so that we have a clear understanding of what it is and include all dogs, all animals, not just the personal pets. They need to include the hunting animals also. Thank you again.
Benny Mullenex, please.
Mr. German, Commissioners, my name is Benny Mullenex. I live at 212 Barkside Lane in Hunter's Ridge. The letter is, explains itself. And, but what it is, a neighbor affair was having a party, and if you've seen the first paragraph, it says that the event was in progress hours before 11:00 PM. Well, it was. It started at about, about 3:30, they started tuning up, and they started playing at 4:00 and they played constantly until 11:00. I called the sheriff's department, and the sheriff's department went over there, and I didn't ask him to tell them to shut it down, I asked them to hold it down. And they called me back, in fact, I called the sheriff's department twice. And the sheriff, the second time, the sheriff did call me back, and he was laughing, undoubtedly he was still there. And he said, "Look, there's an ordinance," which I didn't know there was, "and that they don't have to quit till 11:00." And he paused, and he started laughing, and he said, "By the way, the guy says, 'Hey, your neighbor, come on over to the party.'" Well, he'd been in my house since 4:00 that day. You know, I mean, just, I mean, we went to every room in the house, we closed doors, the music was just like he was right there with us. And so, but here he was, he said, "Hey, I'm your neighbor, come on over, we're friends." And then a week later, I get a letter like this from an attorney telling me that I'm violating his rights, and that on the 29th of September, he's going to have another party. Well, he didn't say the rights, he said that, said I was restricting his liberties to use the property. And that on the last page there, he said that if I called the sheriff's department again, that he would inform his clients what legal actions that he can take. And again, he goes down there, but we consider you our neighbors, and we're, you know, you're welcome to come to the party. I don't want, you know, friends like that, they, they scare me. And I called, I talked to the county manager. The county manager, he told me I could come here and talk to you. I talked to the sheriff, asked him about a, had any kind of machine that could, you know, count the decimal on the sound. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that you had one?
I don't know that I answered that question when we spoke, sir.
Oh, okay, but anyway, I was understanding that you had one, and then we informed they didn't have one, but the sheriff said they didn't use that. What they did, they got three complaints and then they wrote a citation. But also, I got a copy of, from Clements, the attorney, I got a copy of the noise ordinance. And he underlined everything and marked everything of what we had done wrong. But here is what he underlined and said that he was not in violation, if I may read this. Loudspeakers and public address system using or operating for any purpose, any loudspeaker, public address system, or similar device such as, that the sound therefore creates a noise disturbance across a real property boundary or within a noise sensitive zone. And he says he can do this because it says down there between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 PM, but he left out that little word "or," "o-r"? So naturally, if it disturbs me, and this is what I called the county attorney and to get it on this, and I never got a call back on him. I called him about a month ago. And my, my thing is, according to this, on the thing, it says that your noise is in intention of the Board of Commissioners to maintain a noise, a low noise level within the county, so as preserve, protect, and promote the public health, trans- safety and welfare, and to foster convenience, peace, and quiet within the county. I would, I would like an explanation on the noise ordinance, because I know the man, you know, you can get sued for anything. I mean, and only people that win on something like this are attorneys.
I will discuss this with the county manager and the attorney, and I'll call you.
Okay, thank you.
Harold Haben.
Harvin.
Harvin, forgive me.
Oh, okay, give us, nobody gets it right. I can milk a Haslam, Harvin Haslam, I don't matter. I can milk everybody. And I'm always on the wrong side of the room. How's that possible? I always have to walk across the room. Good evening.
That's good exercise.
Good exercise, keeps you young. Good evening, my name is Harold Harvin. I've spoken here before, I live at thirty-eight twenty Windy Trail, in New Bern, North Carolina, over Taylor Creek subdivision. I'm interested in the tethering ordinance too, because I have a neighbor that lives behind a house I own over there. He tethers his dog twenty-four seven. I never see him walk the dog, I never see anybody out with the dog, I figure they must at least feed and water the dog once in a while, they're still alive. Went out there the other day, I know the dog stayed three hours wrapped around a tree, and kept getting more wrapped around for it by his chain. I finally had to go tell my neighbor, "Hey, you know, you got a dog out here that's wrapped around a chain, around a tree." And so he came out and checked, I mean, he hadn't even checked on his dog, his dog barking and crying, and whining, and wanting somebody to unleash him from the tree. I'm not going to reiterate everything that you've heard. I'm a pastor, retired, there is a story in the Bible of a unjust judge, who a widow came to him, and he would not hear her case. He, and, but the widow just kept on, and kept on, and kept on, and kept on, and finally, he had to make a decision. Now, I want to say something to you, eventually, you're gonna have to make a decision. You've already heard that it's not going away, you're gonna have to decide one way or another, and what's important is that the decision that you make is going to reflect a lot upon your character, and I'm gonna explain why in just a minute. I came to, wish I could see that, I came to, I came to a, a meeting and, about this tethering ordinance, and I was pretty shocked. This is Craven County ordinance, right? And I had people from Panico County that's speaking against it, had people from Carter County speaking against it, had somebody from Princeton somewhere in Craven, in Craven County, I don't think that's in Craven County, is, speaking against it. I think if we're gonna have people speaking for or against these issues, they should live and reside in Craven County. This is a Craven County issue. We get upset because Russians interfere with our election, let's get upset because people interfere with our Craven County existence as, as people that live here. I mean, that's just the way that it is. Second thing I want to say is that, that, you know, I, I've heard some of the weirdest stuff, that, you know, dogs have always been able to be in the heat and the cold and the weather. Yeah, they've always run free too, they've not been tied to a chain, or they can't get out of the sun. The time that they've been living those, they could always go and get under a shade tree somewhere. So that, I mean, I, I hear this stuff, it doesn't make sense to me. But, one thing I want to say is this, is it's a greater issue than just the welfare of the dog. A greater issue. Because I'm wondering where our society is going to if we keep doing this, if we keep allowing inhumane treatment of animals, where is our society heading? Mahatma Gandhi made a statement, now, for those of you here, everybody knows who Mahatma Gandhi is, right? He's not the guy that made the rights.
Please slide to the Commissioners.
Okay, he's not the guy that made the rights, okay? And so, Mahatma Gandhi made a statement, he said, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." Listen again, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." So does that, is that going to judge us? What, if we treat our animals this way, what's going to happen? I think the Sun Journal, do y'all get Sun Journal? Do you? I think the Sun Journal answered that for us Sunday, when they put Donald Trump tethered outside the White House. Is this where we're headed as a nation, that we tether people outside? We all, at one time, we did it with our mentally ill loved ones. Is that where we're headed? Is this what we're saying to our young people, that we're going to do disrespect politicians, disrespect people and authority? I respect you, I may not agree with you, but I respect you, because you are an authority in this county. And I'm asking you to seriously look at where this is, as an issue, that determines where we as a nation, as a county, as a people are going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pam Deloche.
Good job on the last name. My name is Pam, Pamela Deloche, I live at forty-one Quarter Deck in Riverbend. First of all, thank you all for your work that you do every month, every year. I've looked at some of your agendas, and you are busy men. I want to specifically thank you for starting the process of providing welfare for our animals in Craven County. The ordinance you have written is a good first step. I have three questions for you, however. First, why are hunting dogs not covered by the ordinance? Whether they're pets or not, don't all dogs deserve the same protections? Hunting dogs feel extreme cold, blistering heat, hunger, and thirst, the same as any poodle or chihuahua. Second, how are quote, "animals kept primarily for hunting," unquote, defined? Third, why is there no mention of general animal, animal abuse in this ordinance? Will you be writing a separate ordinance addressing this crucial issue? Cruelty to animals is inexcusable, and is often associated with domestic violence and child abuse. Animal control officers need the authority to investigate and rectify cruelty situations. Again, thank you for your work and for opening the door to protecting our beloved animals.
Thank you.
Mr. Hal James.
I'm Harold James, and I live at three oh five Calico Drive in Craven County, and I'm a spokesperson for the Coastal Carolina Taxpayers Association. Back in March of this year, during the budget process, I cited a list of programs that our tax dollars fund, that compete with private organizations, private businesses, and also interfere with them. The first one I mentioned was the federally qualified health center. And we have two of them now, as you know. I was watching Fox News recently, and they were interviewing a man who bragged that although he hadn't had a working job, a paying job since nineteen eighty-seven, he had first-class health insurance. How? He went on to say that he got his health service from a federally qualified health center, indeed. When I checked how the Craven County Health Center, Craven's federally qualified health center describes its service, I found this. The Craven County Community Health Center located in New Bern and Havlock are designated as federally qualified health centers. Craven County Community Health Center provides comprehensive, primary, and preventive care services to Craven County residents of all ages, regardless of their ability to pay, the emphasis is mine. Now, what services do they provide? Again, according to their description of their services, the community health centers offers the following services. Annual wellness exams for children and adults, sick visits for adults and children, immunizations, lab services, chronic disease management. Our healthcare team is dedicated to making sure that your care is managed in the office as well as at home. We will work with you to coordinate appointments with other healthcare providers, including specialists. Our team uses evidence-based practices and works with you, and to help you plan your care. During your visits, our team will work with you to provide you with tools and education that can help manage your care at home. It sure sounds nice, not competing, indeed. There's a billboard on Highway seventy east declaring that Craven County Health Center is taking new patients, not all private practices can afford that. There are advertisements in the papers and the unit by the federally qualified health centers seeking professional employees, and examples are, a clinical charge nurse up to sixty thousand a year, RNs for post-stout recovery, emergency department unit manager, and behavioral health. And I'm sure that if they don't get them for the money that they're offering, they'll just raise the offer up to where they get the people they want, because taxpayers fund it. Now, how widespread is this? The North Carolina Institute of Medicine publishes a list of North Carolina healthcare safety net providers. They're not all federally qualified health centers, but they're all so-called safety net providers. There are a hundred and forty-two pages on that list. Each page has about twenty-five providers. This makes a grand total of three thousand five hundred and fifty total. I think that's quite a safety net. I happen to believe that if someone works hard most of his or her life, he or she should reap the rewards of that labor, not be forced by the government to fork over some of it to help a neighbor do well who brags he hasn't worked in thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Griffin.
Amen, God bless you, God bless America, and you guys too. Ray Griffin, Vansport, North Carolina, nineteen eighty-one Streets Frey Road. It's a verse in Jeremiah, and it says, "And they bend their tongues like the bows for lies, for they are not valid, for they proceed from evil to evil, and they know not God." Roy Cooper signed a brunch bill allowing morning alcohol sales in Vansport, everywhere in North Carolina at ten AM. He is advocate of the HB2 bill, the gay marriage, homosexual abortions, he's for everything that the Bible is for, he's against everything the Bible is for. The New Bern Board of Alderman just passed a sale of alcohol on Sunday, ten AM. Now downtown the streets in New Bern are peddling beer on the sidewalk, doing drugs on the streets, heavy stuff in the back alleyways. They got this for the dog ladies. We chained up our dogs, let our kids run loose in the streets. Politicians are like sausage. You put all the leftover stuff in the grinder, and you mix it all together, it's better not to see what's being made. Today, there are those who vote parties and for their pocketbook, when they should vote principles, they should vote for truth and honesty. When they vote for the party, they're doing nothing more than deceiving themselves and bringing America down to an all-time low, and the light of God will not shine upon them. The Democrats have made this statement, there is no God. They made it loud, and they made it clear on public TV, and they broadcasting throughout the US, and simply booed God. There are many men of principles in both parties, but there is no party of principle. If any of you today profess one ounce of Christianity, remember one thing, disobedience brings God's judgment. I worked with New Bern PD for over six years, and I've never seen a time like I'm seeing today. The information that I received is staggering. People downtown now have been stabbed, have been robbed, windows are being broken out, windshields are being broken out downtown. One officer told me that he continually has calls to go downtown on the weekends. Not too far away, shots have rang out. Sadly, it's the almighty dollar that speaks the most loudest. Sadly, the business that we need the money, whilst a shame on those who voted for the brunch bill in New Bern. We used to be the Bible belt, we used to be stand-up for Christianity. What a sad example we are today for our communities, our families, and our children, when it can go downtown on Sunday, look across the street, see the church, and they're drinking beer right across from it. What a price we're paying today in the prison system and the crowded jails we're seeing. Been a prison system since nineteen ninety-seven, never seen I have a time, people going to jail so much like there are today. You need to tell the people where you stand about this thing, about the prison system, and all, and all the things that are going on, the brunch bill. And I said, like Will Rogers said, he said, "We can be on the right track, but if we don't make a move, we'll get run over." And if we continue, like the gentleman said a while ago, if we continue on going down the path we're going down, things are gonna get worse and worse. We need to start taking the stand about these brunch bills, and all these things that are going on, about alcohol, and sadly, even Craven County, they authorize alcohol and sell, and you get ten percent or so of the proceedings of alcohol that is sold in Craven County. You just had to give a hundred and fifty thousand dollars not too long ago for the jail system. And we in Craven County, we preach that every Thursday night. We probably have saved the county a lot of money, because we have given out over probably thousands of Bibles and rich souls to be saved, that will not go into the prison system, or when they come out, they will be rehabilitated. And we just do volunteer work, we probably saved Craven County quite a bit of money. And then we turn right around, and turn, and let the alcohol be loose on the streets, we sell it publicly, make it readily accessible, so anybody can get it. Amen.
Wendy Gudine.
Next room, maybe. Maybe in the other room.
Wendy?
She's available.
Okay.
First of all, I'm for the animal cruelty ordinance.
Can we have your name in the?
Oh, Wendy Gudine, one oh three Wadsworth Lane, New Bern. First of all, everybody, what everybody said about the animal cruelty, I've actually shortened my list, because I agree with what everybody said for it, that there needs to be an animal cruelty ordinance put into effect. It's something strongly I believe in. All animals are God's creatures, so why do we think it's okay to treat the many different, abuse them, leave them, chained up in the heat without food, water, or shelter? To me, it's ignorance. It's time to change the way we treat all the animals. And I shortened it, so everybody else, what you said for prove it, right on, I agree with you. And this is the last of it. I will never understand why people do things, not just to animals, but to any living thing. I know the world can be cruel, there are some bad people out there. So, so why can't we be the ones to take action? This is something I strongly believe in, and it's time to change. I volunteer at the Humane Society, and it's sad, what you see, these animals, they're old, they can't breed anymore, so they just discard them. Do you do that? We don't do that to our parents, you know, we don't do that to the old people, just discard them, because they can't do anything. It's time to change, we need to, we're living in twenty-first century. And that's all, and thank you for your time. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that exhausts the list that we've had before us this evening.
Okay. We would appreciate you all staying if you would like to, however, I'm gonna take a two-minute recess, just to let people leave the room if they'd like. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We're approving minutes of July fifth, tax releases and refunds, and request to set public hearing for Boyo Street closure. Do I have a motion? So move. Second. Madam Flirke, would you call the roll?
Who is the second?
I'll be the second.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
What question was it?
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dase?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Department of Matters Planning, Gardner Road Safety Improvement Resolution, Haywood Darty, the Transportation Department.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good evening.
Commissioners. What I'm here to talk to you about tonight is a matter that was brought to our attention back earlier this year, US seventy at Garner Road. As you can see on the screen there, this is a collision diagram that depicts every crash that we have record of occurring at this intersection, in the calendar years of twenty-twelve through twenty-sixteen. There's a total of twenty-nine crashes that are represented there. This morning before, I left my office, I went ahead and updated to see what we had had occur in the calendar year twenty-seventeen. To date, we have had eight crashes, of which we have records. So we have gone from slightly under six a year to already having eight up through July tenth of this year. If you will. What we are proposing is to do a similar treatment at this location to what is already in place at Grantham Road, just up Highway seventy, in putting in mainline leftovers, so that the left turns off of US seventy will still be able to made, as, as they are being done currently. And, the only change will be that the folks that are on Garner Road will not be able to make a left, to go in either direction, or will not be able to cross. But all right turn movements would still be able to be made, as would the left turns on the main line. Now, what we are proposing, to be able to do this quickly, is to use products similar to what you see here on Berkeley Boulevard in Goldsboro. This is called Quick Curb. And basically, what it is, is you're able to buy these bases, place them on the pavement, and then install the delineator posts, and that helps to keep people from going across them whenever we don't want them to. don't want them to. The benefit to them is that law enforcement, EMS, and fire can still go through there with a very little effort and hardly any damage to their vehicles. But most people don't want their passenger, don't want their personal vehicles being damaged. Reason for wanting to use this particular product is the fact that this intersection, under the project that will install interchanges along this part of US seventy, will most likely be closed completely within the next two to two and a half years, according to John Nance, who is the division engineer out of Greenville. Instead of putting down concrete that would go to waste, we could use this product and then be able to take it up and reuse it again at any other location where it was needed. What would people do that wanted to come out of the south side of Garner Road and go back to New Bern? They would make a right out, could go down to the Taberna intersection and make a U-turn, or, Chad, if you'll go to the next slide, a little bit differently. Not, don't, please don't look at the red lines on this just yet. But what they could do is go up the service road to that break that's located just about in the middle, thank you, come back down seventy to Garner, and then U-turn to go back up to town. People on the north side that wanted to go east toward Havlock would be able to make a right out, go up to Grantham, and turn around there. So, that's pretty much it. Any questions that I could answer?
Before we have any questions, do I have a motion on?
So move.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, discussion. Okay, we'll take questions now.
Okay.
Well, I think this is something we've been looking at for some time, or at least DOT has been looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
Others that are involved in transportation. It's, at least some people have some problems with it, but the facts are that this is a high-crash zone.
Yes, sir.
And it's just a matter of time before you get some people killed out there. Have you seen any fatalities in those crashes?
Not since two thousand twelve. I did not do any research further back, because whenever we're basing our decisions on whether to use our limited safety money, we only go back five years.
I may hear the more serious accident.
There were no fatalities, no severe injuries, but moderate-level injuries that would be like broken arm, things of that nature, that I believe, I do not want to tell you incorrectly. So if you'll give me just a moment. There were six of that level and ten minor injury crashes. And then the rest were thankfully equipment-only damage.
I've spoken with some people with Rescue Squad, which is located not too far from there, and their understanding of the situation and the danger of that intersection, because they have to respond to the crashes there. I didn't realize there'd been a significant increase in the amount of crash events.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what might be causing that, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairman.
Can you tell me, sir, when was the similar structure put into place on West Grantham Road?
I do not know that date right off the top of my head.
Was it around two thousand twelve?
I do not know. That was, that was something that was not done with our safety money. That was done with the local division money. Just like the county departments, a lot of times you've got one department handling one thing, one handling another. But I could find that information and get that back to staff.
I don't know how material it is, Mr. Chairman. I just kind of wondered, and I wondered if the number of crashes that had occurred at Garner Road may have increased because people are now having to use that as a U-turn where they wouldn't have had to before.
I don't think so, because I make that, I go down that Garner Road quite often, because I go to the Hyundai dealer, and I make that lift. And there, that is a serious intersection for accidents. No two ways about it.
Mr. Chair, I went to the meeting in Township Seven on Old Cherry Point Highway.
Yes, sir.
I'm in the fire department as well, and I spoke to some of the firemen there about this Garner Road. And they say it's a good thing to do, because it saves them a lot of response themselves from responding to a call when they can be somewhere else.
Yes, sir.
So I think it's a good idea that this is happening.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to Commissioner Dacey.
Yes, sure.
I do know when they were closing the Grantham Road, that one of the businesses there, Vietnam opposed that closure. And, and I spoke with him about three months after they did it, and he says they got, you know?
Very happy to have.
That it did reduce the amount of accidents there. So, DOT is, I think, one of its primary objectives is safety.
Yes, sir. Well, that's all I do. I cover the thirty-nine eastern counties, everything with I-95 in it to the water, and my entire office is dedicated to traffic safety.
I guess the other thing is that if you go down one more road to Taberna, that's a controlled intersection, so you would have the ability to make that U-turn in a
Yes, sir.
much more safe environment than what you currently have at Garner Road.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I got a question here in regards, I'm living this everything in Havlock. You all did this sometime back in Havlock, and you closed off and everything else. Good, bad, or indifferent, it's there. They've gotten used to it. But our biggest problem is, you're forcing these people down to both of these intersections. The intersections you forced us down to, the turn radius was not big enough for the vehicles to make a turn
I agree.
without going off into the shoulders. And as well as you know, the shoulders are dirt. Now, I've got shoulders down there. You go down there now, it looks like a lake, because it's been torn up. Are you going to ensure that both of these U-turn areas, that the shoulders and the radiuses is big enough to take any type of vehicle? I mean, if our fire trucks gets down there, our tractor trailer gets down there and can't make that turn without tearing up the median section or tearing up the shoulders, you all have a very hard time with money coming out repairing them.
As far as tractor trailers, because the U-turn bulbouts for a vehicle of that size, I don't know that we can physically do that with the service roads in place where they are. That is something that would have to be looked at in the design of the, make sure that what vehicles can make the U-turns at the adjacent U-turn points. But with limited safety money, because for this project, I have been told by the state traffic engineer that we have a budget of a hundred thousand dollars. And that Quick Curb that you were shown earlier is not an inexpensive product, so I don't know how much asphalt is planned to be put down with this. The way, as I mentioned to Commissioner Dacey earlier, the, or excuse me, Vice Chair Dacey, whenever we, whenever we're working on getting solutions, I'm the money man. I come up with the locations that have, have had high crash rates, and then I go after the safety funds. And once they're secured, I hand them off to the local division office, which would be for this area, Greenville. And then their design people actually will get the design laid out and then tell me whether or not what I've gotten them is actually going to be sufficient before we let it to be it.
I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I understand what you're saying, but I don't want to make, I want to make sure, this is a busy intersection, and we've had proof of accidents. But I don't want to push those accidents down to two other locations because of U-turns that people can't make.
Well, Chad, would you mind going back to the, to, there you go. The biggest difference between the situation that we have here and the situation that you described in Havlock, Commissioner, is that we have a wider median, where in Havlock, we were constrained by the curb and gutter. You only had a twelve-foot center-left turn lane. And here, not only do you have the twelve-foot left turn lane, but you've got what appears to be a two-to-three-foot paved shoulder, then you've got the grass strip, and then you've got another two-to-three-foot paved shoulder. So we've got more pavement with which to work.
Don't worry about that intersection. You're going to take care of that. There's plenty in there. But I'm saying, when you go down to Taberna and go up to Grantham intersection, for them to make the U-turn to go back in the other direction,
Mm-hmm.
that has to be wide enough so they can make that U-turn.
Well, I can tell you that U-turns are currently being made at Grantham to date, because anybody that's in that left turn lane, if they're not going over to the service road, they're making a U-turn, because those are the only movements that are allowed. Down at Taberna and the Grantham intersection, and this is all just eyeballing from here, because I had not thought of that question in advance. But it appears that it has a very similar cross-section to the cross-section that we have at Garner Road. Now, if we go back to Taberna, Taberna appears to be similar as well, as far as the width of the roadway itself. But again, just eyeballing it, I can't tell you that the biggest of tractor-trailers would make that, but everything up to, like, delivery trucks should be able to, and school buses should be able to, without difficulty.
Well, again, you're saying that, and we could go on this all night on this. I can't make the U-turns in Havlock with my F-150 without going into the shoulders.
Yes, sir. And that's because you've got a much more limited turning width.
So that's what I'm concerned with here, making sure. Just take a look at it, it's all I'm asking.
And we can certainly do that in the design phase. We will do that, and we can report back to staff on what we find. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is sort of piggybacking on what he said, but Gacy Lee, I call him by name, but they're down Garner Road, isn't that correct? And so, you know, they do have a tremendous amount of tractor-trailers going in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you back up and come back up here to the stoplight before you get, I don't know what road that is, up there by the bank, is that where it's at? Back up there.
Airport.
Airport.
Okay.
Is that the last one before them? Okay, they have adequate, they can turn to the left, and they've got adequate room to maneuver around. Did they get on Old Cherry Point Road, or did they go on the service road? You know?
Probably easiest to go to the Old Cherry Point Road.
And then go back up.
Yeah.
But they have adequate room to be able to turn off Old Cherry Point Road to get back on Garner. Yes. That would be my concern. I mean, they would, they would probably be the busiest, you know, part.
They're busy. They don't, to my knowledge, I don't think they have tractor-trailers. They have tractor-trailers delivering to them, but that, those vehicles can, you know, that's no big deal. They'll make a left over. But, I mean, what they have are your typical delivery-type trucks. It'll be inconvenient for them, it will be. And they leave the site, they'll need to go down to a controlled access point to get across the highway to go to Havlock.
And please keep in mind that within the next two to two and a half years, they'll be doing that anyhow. Because everything will be freeway, you'll have interchanges at the predetermined locations, which, to my knowledge, and I don't, please don't hold it against me if I'm wrong, but the last I saw was going to be at the signalized intersections, which would mean Williams Airport to Burna. And then further out.
Grantham.
Oh, Grantham gets one as well? Okay.
Thank you.
See, y'all got good staff here. They keep me out of trouble.
That's why they're here.
Well, and I do, I do want to give Chad strong, special note of appreciation, because he is the one that put together the slides for us this evening.
That's good. Can I manage, would we a approval of a motion tonight?
Yes, if you agree with the analysis by DOT and planning, there is a resolution under attachment number three.
Yeah, I see that.
And that resolution, and I'll, Heywood, I'll try not to butcher this too much, but DOT for these type of projects requires a resolution from the county or city or planning organization for which the project would fall, because Garner Road's in the county, would fall under the county, is the way I understand it, Heywood.
Yes, sir.
And the resolution there is fairly simplistic. I think we modeled it after one, I believe, that had, I don't know, I'm struggling to find the resolution here.
It was, it was one that came from Goldsboro.
Goldsboro, that we had modeled it after. So we used some language, changed a few things up, but it's fairly simplistic. And I understand, if you approve this tonight, it will be able, Heywood would have the ability to then go in October before the group he needs to for approval, and that may have changed as we talked.
It has changed.
Okay.
I spoke with the state traffic engineer this morning concerning this, because I wanted to have a clear commitment from him. And basically, once we get approval of a resolution, then it would be up to the division office in Greenville to purchase and install. And they would be able to do that up to a hundred thousand dollar total cost without further commitment or consultation of the state traffic engineer who controls the limited safety funds.
Is there any other questions?
Just one, I want to clarify, just, just from my understanding, is that the intersection's going to be closed anyhow?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and the reason-
Will the leftover be closed?
Yes.
As well, when they do the-
Whenever they do the interchanges.
So all points will have to go to a
Interchange. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're just doing it two years ahead of time, and like
To help-
save a life or two.
They'll get, they'll get used to it.
And by using the product that I mentioned earlier, we do have the opportunity to not waste those dollars, because we could reuse that at another location.
Okay. I jumped on the, before the resolution, but we have the resolution. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Wait, sir, we already have a motion, a second on table. I had Commissioner-
Yeah, I know, I jumped, I jumped on it, okay. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Accepted.
Thank you.
Any ayes? Ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Department of Matters Cooperative Extension Budget Amendment, Tom Glasgow, the director. There he is.
Good evening. We are asking for this budget amendment as a means to house money temporarily through the course of the fiscal year. Revenues coming in for events, camps, programs, et cetera, revenues related to expenses. We need somewhere to temporarily house those revenues, and then, of course, the expenditures go right back out to cover whatever expenses are involved in these various activities. We have three accounts listed. One is for miscellaneous one-day or half-day local programs. The second one listed as camp fees would be for things like a summer camp-type activities that we have at the extension office. And then the, the meaning of the external event, or EXT event revenue and expenses, has to do with NC State activities, such as the one-week summer camps that are outside the county, or the 4-H Congress that is held in Raleigh for several days every year. And again, we, as you note in the justification or explanation, we did have a new 4-H agent come into place in November, and we weren't real sure exactly how we were going to manage these things. Just wasn't known at the time the budget was due exactly how to set this up. So that's why I'm here asking for this at this point in the year.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyne?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Department of Matters Recreation Budget Amendment to move remaining Bait grant funds from last fiscal year to current budget. Eddie Gams.
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. We had a grant that we applied for and was awarded for the Bait Foundation last, we got, we were awarded the funds in July, and that's to give league assistance to some of our leagues here. And we typically give that money out through June. And by the end of June, the last fiscal budget, it was apparent that four of these leagues, for whatever reason, were not gun to, going to accept their money from Bait. So in lieu of returning the money, Bait gave me permission to spend the money on some of our projects at Creekside. One of the main things I pointed out was to buy additional shelters for the new shelter, new picnic tables for the new shelter that we just built at Creekside, and do some additional parking and walkways for the, one of our existing shelters over there, the walking trail. So we're asking for that money to be moved. So we are asking for that money to be moved to a funds this year that we can spend that money.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is Department of Matters Parks Budget Amendment, Kelly Walker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Fiscal year 2015 and 2016, Craven Area Rural Transit System was approved to replace three vehicles, which were purchased with rural funding and had met useful life. The replacement vehicles would be for exclusive use in the urban area only. These vehicles were not replaced during that fiscal year 2016, 2015, 2016, due to the timing of the state contract that was available for procurement of vehicles. They were ordered but had not been received during fiscal year 2016, '17. The Urbanized Area Formula Program Grant, commonly referred to as the 5307, which covers 85% of the cost of those vehicles in the urban, urbanized areas still available. We are originally budgeted for Carts to cover the 15% local match, but since that time, Carts has been awarded an urban state match that will cover 7% of it, that leaves 8% for Carts to cover. And we plan on covering that with the sale of the vehicles that are being replaced. So we're requesting approval of a budget amendment to reflect the revenue and expenses for those vehicles in the fiscal year 2017, 2018, that were originally budgeted in 2015, 2016.
Motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, this may seem stupid, but we've been messing with this for almost three years now. What year vehicle are we getting?
They are 2014s. I mean, I'm sorry, 2017s.
2017.
Sorry. Sorry about that. 2017.
And they were in a flood, and-
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
If I could ask a question. Kelly, excuse me, now, the 5307 urbanized, it says 85%, why did I think that urbanized funding was at 50%?
The, for operating expenses, it's at 50%. There are some projects that we can capitalize at 80%. And since these all are lift-equipped, we can actually capitalize them at 85%.
Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, so next, we're asking for a budget amendment and approval for the camera systems on the vehicles. In fiscal year 2016, 2017, Carts was approved to purchase a camera system to be located on the vehicles. The camera system is included in the Urbanized Area Formula Grant for fiscal year 2016, '17, and it is also still available. And that is a reimbursement rate of 80%, of 40%. So 40% is our allocation for the urbanized area, so it'd be 80% of that 40%. It is also included in the fiscal year 2016, '17 grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and they have extended the period of performance to November 30th of 2017. That reimbursement rate is 90% of 60%, which 60% of course being allocated for the rural amount. Carts is able to procure the camera system using the existing contract between NC DOT and one of three companies. They have a state contract with three different companies. We requested and received onsite presentation and proposals from two of those companies. The lowest-cost proposal was received from Seon, and is a four-camera system, and that system does meet our needs. And a spreadsheet was provided showing the cost comparisons of the proposals. There were other proposals from Apollo, but they were higher than the one I listed, so I just listed the lowest one. Carts is requesting that the Board of Commissioners award the project to Seon System Sales and authorize execution of a contract in the amount of $70,060 for the purchase and installation of a four-camera system on Carts vehicles. We have been assured that this project will be able to be completed no later than the period of performance deadline of November 30th, 2017.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion. And question?
Kelly, how many vehicles is covered?
29 vehicles. We have three vehicles that won't have them, but they are the locally provided vehicles, like the Crown Vicks that we get from, from the Creighton County inventory. So all of the vans and buses will have them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm so glad that we are getting cameras on these Carts vans, just going to protect both the county and the citizen. I know we had a chance to do this before, but we chose not to do it. I'm glad it did come back around and we were able to do this at this time.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Kelly, why do we need, why do we need cameras on vehicles?
For multiple reasons. In talking with other systems, it has helped identify things that drivers might be doing wrong before it becomes a problem. If drivers are doing things right, then there's no concern for them to have the cameras on the vehicles. It can be also used to prove the driver is not at fault in accidents, and it has been used for those purposes. One of the cameras faces forward from the, where the driver is, and it captures, it can capture the stoplights. And it has proven in several cases that the driver did not run the red light, that the other driver was the one that was at fault. So that saved a lot of insurance claims and responsibility and liability.
So the camera looks forward, is nothing shows the passenger's only-
There's, there's four cameras, one-
Or entering or exiting?
It covers all that, yeah. One looks forward, one covers the entryway, and two face where you can see back towards the back of the vehicle and the wheelchair securement area. So I'll-
You don't watch this, have somebody just sitting there watching it, do you? Just have it there if you have a problem?
Correct. It'll automatically record or flag whenever the lift is activated. So if we specifically wanted to watch that, we could. If a driver has what we can call an event, if there's something that they want us to see, something could be going on in the vehicle. For example, if they're having a problem with a particular passenger or something, they want us to see it later, then they can flag it, we can go to that point and look forward. We don't have to sit there and watch the whole, the whole video. We could if we wanted to, but it would be very time-consuming.
How much life does that, some of these can-
Not positive. Off the top of my head, I didn't bring that with me. But they do have a long life. Some of them that were purchased the last time around, as Commissioner Sampson mentioned, from the other systems, are still in operation and still functioning. There's very low, very little maintenance and upkeep on them. And when there is a camera that, that needs to be replaced, you can replace just that camera, you don't have to replace the whole system. Or if the DVD drive goes bad, you can replace just that, not the entire system.
Just on here, Mr. Chairman.
Roll, yes.
Do we have to add any additional staff to accommodate this?
No.
Is it your opinion that this could potentially save accounting money by instituting a service?
Yes, sir. As a preventative method, as well as when a driver is not at fault proving it. The other side of that is if a driver's at fault, it's going to prove you're at fault, too. But I, each system that I have talked to has told me that it has saved them money in litigation and insurance claims in the long run. Not to mention making it safe for our passengers, because now we can spot-check our drivers, that I can't do without them knowing I'm doing it, because they see me.
Does this decrease our insurance premiums?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Chairman, also, it helps protect the senior citizens who's riding on this Carts van. Because, you know, we have a lot of senior citizens, because I want them looked out for, because I'll be one after a while, so. I think it's nice that we have them on there, so we won't have to go to court to prove that I'm right if something happened to me.
Right.
Or anyone else.
Right.
And clerk? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Okay. And next, I have a request to hold a public hearing at the September 5th Board of Commissioners meeting, and this is regarding the Carts Title VI program. The Federal Transit Administration requires that all direct and primary recipients document their compliance with the Department of Transportation Title VI regulations by submitting a Title VI program to their FTA Regional Civil Rights Office once every three years, or otherwise directed. Our Title VI program concurrent letter from FTA, which is dated December 19th, 2014, requires that we submit a program to the FTA by October 1st of 2017. The current Title VI program and current Limited English Proficiency, or LEP, program and plan were approved by the board in October 20th of 2014. And as part of meeting the requirements for reviewing and updating the plan every three years, Carts will be soliciting input regarding these plans from the Carts Transportation Advisory Board, community agencies, and the public via email, and one public meeting prior to, one public meeting prior to the public hearing. We are requesting a public hearing to be held at the First Board of Commissioners meeting in September. The proposed program will be available for review no later than August 25th, and it will be available on the Carts page of the Craven County website, as well as in the Carts office. So we are asking to go ahead and set a public hearing for September 5th, please.
Do I have a motion to set a public hearing for September 5th?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Department of Matters Finance Directive Budget Amendment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the, tonight I have for you one item on the agenda for fire service districts. At June 19th Board Meeting, if the Board will recall, we approved 50% matching grants for three volunteer fire departments who were awarded equipment grants from the state Volunteers Fire Department Fund. The three matching grants totaled $73,966.34, and were approved as follows. Little Swift Creek Volunteer Fire Department for $24,994.34. Dover Volunteer Fire Department for $19,792. And Fort Barnwell Volunteer Fire Department for $29,180. Due to the timing of the grants, we're not able to be included in the original adopted budget for the current fiscal year. At this time, I'm requesting amendments in order to appropriate these funds for these three fire districts.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Is this coming out of fund balance, or?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk? Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is appointments pending, current, and upcoming. Want them to be effective immediately. Fireman's Relief Fund Board. Term John Norris, this name keeps appearing.
Chairman, we have an application of Mr. Mark Dale.
Wow, that's great.
Ask that he be-
Appointed, all right. Appointed by acclamation. Next is Adult Home Advisory Committee. We had two sheets on this. I've put them both together. One is the people who have resigned, Myra Bergman, Ruth Swank, and Rico Evans, and Susan Mathis. I have three more terminations, Linda Shagdon, Nancy Verziere, and Lorraine Mark. Ann York and Cheryl White are the only two remaining on that committee. I believe Ann York is probably going to resign also. Do you know about Cheryl?
She told me the other week she was staying on.
She was staying on. Okay, so we have one person on that. Commissioner Dacey and I have set up a meeting with the ECC Director about this committee, and this is where we have the bedbugs in one of the adult care nursing facilities. And we'll be looking into this to see if we can do something. Havelock Planning Board.
No, sir. The, Madam Clerk, the alternate has moved on, has moved up, and has taken a permanent seat. We're looking for an alternate, is that correct for the planning board?
I am not sure if that's the case.
All right, let me check into that. Oh, okay. No, we don't have one yet.
Recreation and Parks, we have, I think what we have here is Dan Miller is staying, and Jim Burnthall is leaving. Correct, sir?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have everybody for that now. Did you need anything else on that?
Nope, that's all I needed, was for it to be-
Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Terms expiring Tracy Monk. She's willing to continue.
Excuse me, backing up to the Recreation Advisory Board. You appointed Mr. Lewis at the last meeting, but I don't recall that you reappointed the other three individuals.
Oh, I thought we had. I thought we had reappointed Braxton and Webb. And the only one, and we had appointed Jim Burnthall and not Dan Miller. Now we're appointing Dan Miller and removing Jim Burnthall.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, okay. Juvenile Protection, Tony Monk, willing to continue, so we'll approve that one. New Burn Planning and Zoning Board. I've, I've made several calls on that this weekend, but I haven't been lucky. I'll try again one more time. Craven Community Child Protection Team. Term expiring is Clayton Gaskins. Mr. Gaskins has indicated he'd be willing to continue serving. That one is good. EMS Emergency Medical Services. Term expiring Crystal Two would be willing to continue. Jonathan Gaskins, New Burn Rescue Squad stepped down as captain. John Harold Bridgenham stepped down as captain.
Chairman, nominate Michelle Smith and Brian McCru.
Okay. By acclamation. Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. Daniel? Yes.
I ask that you reappoint Mr. Dan Newt.
Okay, by acclamation. Craven County Community Child Protection Team. Debbie Hodges, Board of Education Designate. Expiring. Do we know about the Debbie?
Yes, she would continue as designated.
I'll nominate her.
All right, by acclamation. I was asked to hold off on the Hundred Alliance Board. So we'll hold off on that one. Upcoming appointments for September, jury commission, nursing home advisory committee, voluntary agricultural districts, and in October, clean sweep. County Attorney's Report.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report on tonight.
Okay. County Managers' Report.
That's up for first, Jim. That's up for first. I seen that call, the manager wanted to know where my report was.
You know, Jimmy ought to pay us to be here tonight for that, you know?
That'd be a big fee.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could figure something out. Commissioners, in your agenda packet under County Manager's Report, there's an attachment number 10, which is a budget document for two events. One is the Connect with Craven event on October 10th at the Convention Center. And the other is the Opioid Leadership Forum, which North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has asked each county to host, particularly the chairman to take the lead on that. That event, you probably haven't heard as much about as Connect with Craven, would include every elected official in Craven County along with the chief law enforcement officers and other individuals from the base and organizations like that to discuss the opioid crisis that we're currently in, not only in Craven County, but in North Carolina and the United States. You all have heard, I'm sure, through emails and the news and meetings you've been to about the issues that we have. I've been introduced to this more frequently as we've been planning this event and certainly starting to understand the impacts in Craven County's a lot greater than I thought. So with that said, I would ask to host these two events will, will require some financial expenditures on the budget. We've included things such as advertising mainly for the Connect with Craven event. And I've outlined how we plan to do that through miscellaneous, or excuse me, through varying media, newspaper, radio, websites, social media. We need some event cost, setup costs there, some participant items that we'll need for both events such as name tags and things like that. And finally, some staff expenditures for food and things for the folks who'll be working both events. The budget amendment that is behind the, um, the actual budget is for $6,757 even for those two events. And we are asking that, that be placed into the other supplies line in the county manager's budget. And we're asking that that come from fund balance.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor, we need a motion on this.
Need roll call.
Roll call. Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm going to play calendar jeopardy with you here. I want to tell you about a host of events that are coming up in the next three months. And I figured now would be a good time to, to start planning on these. First of all, as I mentioned, on September 22nd, we will be hosting the Opioid Leadership Forum. That will take place at the Convention Center. Letters went out Friday, most of them, some went out today for addresses we were striving to get. And some will go out tomorrow for addresses that we're still waiting on. Again, we're expecting an 8:30 to 12:30 event. We'll have speakers from various different walks of life. We have a planning team which Commissioner Mark sits on along with staff and our partners with the mental health agency Trillium. I will tell you, it's, it's shaping up to be a great program. So certainly be on the lookout for your letter. And if you happen to have contact with another elected board within your district, if you'd make sure they got the message when you see them and tell them, you know, this is an important event and we'd like them to be there. Also send these to the Board of Education and judges, DAs, that whole kind of gamut of elected officials there. So we have that date.
Elected representative.
And we've also, that's correct, we've also invited our legislators to attend with us. So we thought that would be nice. Uh, October 10th, as I mentioned, is the Connect with Craven event. That will be from 4:00 to 7:30 at the Convention Center. Right now, we have about 75 different booths from different county departments and partner agencies that will be there to describe what county government does and to have a hands-on experience and let folks interact with the people who actually do it, which is the department head and employees of each of the departments. We will have an outside exhibit area with some of the equipment that we have as a county and some of our partner agencies have, such as fire trucks, BOB, which is our mobile crisis center, our recycling trailer, things like that. And we're really excited that our partners, such as the Board of Education, community college, hospital, libraries, our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council will also be there to display the products and services that they provide.
This is an excellent vehicle for transparency of government.
Yes, sir, I can't think, and I've, I've tried to find, I am unaware of an event like this that's ever happened in North Carolina. It may have and just not have gotten the publicity, so I don't want to take away from anyone. But certainly the first time we've ever done it in Craven County, so, look forward to that. On October 16th, I have finally, um, really, really excited to present this to you, will be the grand opening of our water plant down on Lewis Farm Road. October 16th is your day commissioner meeting. I figured I would have most of you here to go down after that. We would do it immediately following this meeting, probably at about 11:00. We would like to have that open to the public so they can have a tour. We'll have the construction crew, our engineering crew, and the county staff who will man the facility there to give tours. We're not going to have a huge presentation like we did at the groundbreaking, but certainly have some informational stations set forth. I toured the facility last Thursday. And if I was a betting man, I would have betted it was complete. But there's some minor things that they're tweaking. But we're actually making water from the ground through the system out to the lines. We're not serving the citizens with it yet. We're unfortunately having to dump it because of some state laws as we're tweaking the, the process, but water's in the pipes. Commissioner Jones, I know you may mention this, but we are hosting our, I believe this is the fifth rendition of our going to the districts to have our community meetings. We'll be doing one in District Two. We're continuing to work on the location and the schedule. But as of now, September 11th will be the date of that. I'm sure he'll want to talk a little bit about it. And finally, on August 21st, we will have a work session following your regular commissioner meeting. And that will cover two issues, which will be, one, the CTP plan or the transportation plan for carts. You've been briefed on an initial presentation, I believe back in June. You asked for a couple of months to study it and we'll bring it back to you there. It has gone before the MPO, I believe, last week, Steve? Last week, and I think it was well received there. Unfortunately, Gene read it for the 15th time and found something today he's chasing down. So we're going to make sure that gets figured. And we're also going to deal with the animal ordinance updates that you addressed again back in June. And we're going to bring some more information to you on that.
Saying that we have both of these on the work agenda. I think we should make plenty of time available for those.
Yes, sir. Uh, certainly, hopefully, we'll, we'll have a short meeting like we normally do during the day. We'll have, you know, rest of the day to do that. Are there any other issues the board would like to cover during that work session?
Only issue I want to cover is the September 15th, I believe we have the workforce development meeting. September 15th, I forget what it was, was it the workforce development of the city?
That's this month.
Is it, I meant this month.
That's a groundbreaking.
The First Street Project, yes, sir, I, I don't have the date with me, I believe it's next week.
Yeah.
I want, 15th, yeah, August 15th, yes.
Because I saw an email today and evidently not too many of the commissioners have answered it.
Okay, well, um, yes. And I shouldn't have left that out because that is an important event as we're a funding partner with the city and the college on that. And that is an exciting time. I know they're, they're ready to get started over there. So yes, they are having a groundbreaking on that. I believe that they have a new name for the project and I can't think of it off the top of my head. I just refer to it as the First Street Project. And then finally, just an update on what I've been up to since the last meeting. I did attend a C-1A meeting last week. We are working on a lot of issues there. Timothy has reported that he's certainly still getting plenty of requests. We are at a bit of a void for space and things to show people at this point. And that group is working on that issue coming forward. I also attended a groundbreaking and a 20th anniversary of Red Bosch last week, which was a really nice event. I know some of you were there, but certainly good to see that group growing and the jobs that they've created in our community. So that's all I have.
What was the total employment without one of the building, 487?
For the, the, the new building, it's 485 people. New employees from the, the 100,000 square foot that they're building now and then the CDC, which was a 400,000 square foot addition on their distribution facility. Plus, a lot of people don't know, they're also investing in a call center here. One's existing on the site, they're moving it offsite and going to expand it with a larger footprint. And call centers are actually a good target industry for us because we have a lot of folks particularly identified with the Marine Corps or you have spouses that can handle those jobs. So we have an untapped resource there. And of course, I went to Ohio and heard a whole lot about opioid abuse.
Yeah, we sure did.
I will tell you, you don't think anybody's ever ahead of you, you don't want to. But in this issue, I'm glad we're not where they were. Certainly Ohio, West Virginia, and Kentucky have been in this battle for a long time. So there's some best practices we can certainly look at as we go down the path.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners Reports. Commissioner Tyson?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, three items to bring before the board tonight. As the county manager talked about, September 11th, we are planning a, a meeting for District Two. Uh, I think our two districts are the, the largest districts for all the commissioners. As mine is spread out from Glen Burnie Road, the Rims, uh, the Dover, off way to Vancebury, it is a large area. And it's trying to find an area where everybody can come and be, you know, be a part, is what we're trying to do. Uh, we probably are trying to target for the Coast City area if we can to try to have something in that area. And, uh, we're going to try to, I will, not the county, but I will be spending my money to try to advertise it. We've had a, a lot of interest in the opioid drug problem that we have in Western Craven County. And, um, this meeting in which I will have might be a little bit different than some of the rest that our focus probably in this meeting is going to be devoted a lot of time to giving for our sheriff and also our district attorney. And so we will get that word out here very soon, confirmation of that. Also, Coast City, as everybody's aware, suffered a, a great loss last week. We hear killings, murders every day on TV and read them in the newspaper. But for a town like Coast City, you know, we have never had that before. And it struck home because it hit one of our own, somebody that we all knew. Any murder is senseless, but this definitely was also. My prayers goes out to this family as they are mourning the loss of their loved one. But in the midst of the, the situation that we had, I just want to, um, echo what I've already said about our law enforcement in Craven County. They do not receive, I don't think, accolades that they should. This individual that did this murder was on the backside of my farm hiding out. And so all night long, we could see the helicopter as it went around. And, um, I'm going to call out all that were involved. The Craven County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Jeremy Nett, District Attorney Scott Thomas, the New Bern Police Department, their K-9 unit, the Lenoir County Sheriff's Office, their K-9 unit. And they had manpower, North Carolina Highway Patrol, um, US Coast Guard helicopter was there, and State Highway Patrol helicopter. And they, we had at one time, I was talking with the sheriff about midnight that night. And he told me that we had over 50-some law enforcement that was there looking for this individual. Because of not only, um, the support of our law enforcement, but also of citizens being involved, this individual was apprehended without incident. And so, again, I want to publicly thank all that were involved and for the countless hours that they put into it. I went out early about 6 o'clock the following morning. And these individuals, our law enforcement, they stayed out all night and they were tired. But yet they kept on and I commend them for what they did. And the last thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, um, I lost my, my grandmother a week before last. My grandmother was also my mother. She, she took me in when I was seven years old and, um, raised me until I left. But I want to thank this Board of Commissioners and the staff for their outpouring support that they've given to my family and myself. And we thank you and also to that support and support I've received from my community and across the county. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Liner?
Sir, thank you. Mr. Tyson, I'm glad you gave up your time because I got a lot. The Columbus trip, the NACO conference brief was my first trip up there for the national. And it was a learning experience. I mean, there was a lot of great information shared, a lot of great speakers. I mean, it's really an eye-opener. You get down here and we talk about the opioid problems and we see some of it. And we sit down here and say, we don't really have that big of a problem. We do have a problem. But in Franklin County, which is Columbus, Ohio's county in there, they're projecting to have 800 overdose cases this year. This year, 800 cases in one county of the opioid problems. And I think I've got to commend this board for taking a step forward to start looking at it. Because everybody on the other side of 95 thinks people on this side of 95 are hicks and hillbillies and don't have the resources to do anything. So once they start rubbing up there, they're going to come, they're going to come down thinking it's easy, easy, easy prey. So we've got to be prepared, but most of all, we've got to be prepared looking out for our own families and folks around us. Because it does not go on barriers. It crosses all avenues. There's not one society of personnel, it's everybody. So, I mean, it was, it was an eye-opener for me, it was a learning experience, and I appreciate being up there. The 19th of August, the school board is having their annual Stock the Bus, uh, stuff for school kids. It's from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock at the three Walmarts, Walmarts in the county. If you can afford it and can do it, they'll take anything. If you can get the Staples, Staples has got, uh, single-subject note binders, 70 pages for 10 cents. And, uh, two folder binders for 10 cents. So anything can, can help. I also attended the Bosch Groundbreaking Thursday. This county, I don't think the public realizes the magnitude of that amount of work that goes on out there. For anyone in this county says, that are saying that they get no support or no financial gain by having them out there, needs to go look at the books and what is going on. By having 1,100 workers over almost a billion dollars' worth of assets in there that's, that's pulling taxes on of what they do. They may not be in one municipality, but they are in this county. And over 800 of 1,100 employees live in Craven County. And a good percentage of that live in New Bern. So we all receive it. So I think we, we, we need to have an eye-opener of what that place does for us here. I had my town hall meeting on the 17th of July. Wasn't as good as I expected. I had 94 people plus 18 staff. I was prepared to feed 150, so I fed the seniors the next day with what was left over. But it was still a good turnout. I appreciate staff on what they did. I appreciate Commissioner McCabe for showing up and being there to go with it. Nothing but great feedback from the public there of knowing the type of staff that we have and how they can get their points across. And again, manager, I appreciate your team and what you did to help them get the net over with and going in. Now, I got a thing for the manager. This noise ordinance that was brought up, I know we can take a look and do that better. But I have a real concern when we see them send the sheriffs out there and the sheriff gives the person who's being complained on the name of the complainer. I think that's wrong.
Yeah.
I don't think that should be part of his obligation or his duty. Now, I don't know how you can do that with the sheriff, but we've got to take a look at that, you know? Otherwise, you're going to have people that's not going to report anything because they're afraid the sheriff's going to give out their names of the people that they're going out to check on. So I'd like for you to take a look at that if possible. The board has no objection?
Nope.
On that. And I'd like to take a look at that noise ordinance. And, and I'll ask, I'll ask the attorney in that letter, how can that attorney state or telling that individual not to go to the sheriff for any more complaints? I mean, that's sort of a, a real scare tactic.
Commissioner Lyner, I cannot comment upon the tactics or, um, practices of another attorney in that manner. And I haven't looked at the letter yet.
Yeah.
I didn't see that letter for tonight.
That's one of the reasons that I wanna talk with the, the attorney and to the county manager.
Uh, next thing, the, the manager, if you could take a look at, if the board approves on this or has no objection. On the report of the animal cruelty of a law enforcement, I, I didn't quite understand if it was law enforcement or if it was the animal control officer who responded out there. And they admitted that the dogs were being used, had been used for dogfighting, and they couldn't go on the property to take, take action. I mean, that's automatic guilt, I mean, that's in the state statute, that they should have had authority to go on. I mean, they aren't, they had, I, I, in my interpretation, that was an amount of guilt. It was cruelty. It states in there, dogfighting is not allowed, so if you please take a look at that. Uh, next one going on, two weeks ago, Havelock lost a great individual, and that was with Coach Wilbersasser. A great individual, a great football coach, a great man for Havelock, who took a lot of kids, probably related anyplace else. Who turned their lives around, turned in the, to society and know, and has a purpose now because of him. So, uh, my best goes out to his family and everybody associated with, associated with him. And I think that's it.
Commissioner McCabe.
Uh, yes, I have a few things. Um, John and Samson and I, uh, attend a meeting at the, uh, New Bern Mall Police Department. Uh, our mission was to communicate, provide awareness, education, and treatment to battle against heroin, opium, and other, other, um, alcohol addiction in our counties. Uh, it was, uh, they having a, a, we, uh, fundraising here, and on your point, uh, embrace recovery September thirtieth from three to seven PM. And also, they having, um, a Harley-Davidson fundraiser on October the seventh. Uh, the Harley-Davidson motorcycle is gonna ride from, uh, Jane City on Highway seven to the Fair Road to Pamlico County for fundraising and back here again. Uh, John and I went to the meeting, I bought the opening there, there, a lot of people, uh, kids in our county in our neighborhoods are on the drugs, and we need to do something about it. Uh, John and I did purchase a shirt, uh, from them, and let you see it. If you wanna buy one, let me know, I can get you one. That's what it says on the back of it, it's HOPE, H-O-P-E. So, that's what it stands for. And, uh, it was a, a good meeting there. Also, um, these drugs here, a lot of things, a lot of doctors are giving these single citizens too much drugs and they can't use it. And keep in the cabinet where these kids are getting hold of them and using them. And these pharmacies are making millions and million dollars off, uh, these single citizens. So, that's something, something that needs to be stopped. I also, um, I was working on, um, the Core Creek, uh, Bridge is off Highway one-on-one. It called the intercoastal waterways. Uh, on that bridge, uh, they have no reflectors on that bridge. At nighttime, you cannot see nothing, both sides, especially in the raining. So, I was working, trying to get some reflectors for about a year, and I finally got them last week. And everybody's very happy, you can see, it looks so beautiful at night, it's like Christmas on that bridge. It looks very nice. And I wanna thank the, um, the D O T for doing it for me. Also, um, I thought, uh, George Lineham missed about the night out in Havelock that you and I went to. But that time pretty, pretty good, beautiful weather, and, uh, wasn't hot and wasn't cold. We also, uh, some of the commissioners attend the, uh, the social meeting in, uh, Ohio. The National Association for County Annual Conference held in July the twenty-first to the twenty-fourth join one thousand five hundred county leaders from across the nation in Ohio County, City of Columbus. Um, North Carolina represent more than any state. We had, uh, thirty-five counties represent their, at their, uh, uh, meeting. And a lot of people might not aware, there were, in our, that was three thousand and sixty-nine, uh, county governments in the United States. And I didn't know neither of them attended to the meeting. So, that's, um, some good information to, uh, uh, to hear. Um, I'll send this by then. Hmm. That is, that is it, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you.
First, first thing I'd like to say, uh, in Craven County on Saturday at ten o'clock, they're gonna have a medicine giveaway at Stanley White Recreation Center. Now, this will be not medicine that's no good, but this gonna be the top-notch medicine. Anybody, and anybody getting in line can get, no matter what your income or whatever. They're gonna give the medicine to you if you're in line. And you know, medicine is pretty high near not going, let's get your asthma. They're gonna give you kind of medicine you asked for. So, this, this gonna be very helpful to a lot of the citizens, because a lot of the citizens are not able to buy their medicine. Some people, you know, can buy the medicine, a lot of people can't. So, we have to look out for the ones who can't. Because we're gonna be brothers and sisters to each other, we gotta look out for each other, because at one time, as I always say, we're gonna need some help down the line somewhere. As I be looking at the news, especially last week, and see all these homes have been destroyed, and all these people up there working together. Well, I can't understand why come we can't work together when our home is nice and we're not having any problem. But look like it take big problem for four human beings can begin to work together and help each other out. We do a lot of complaining, but we're actually helping people that needs help. You might go out, let's walk out, walk downstairs, might need help before you can get to your car. Somebody might give you a helping hand. I know a lot of people have helped me, but this medicine is being given away by volunteers. They had a, they had the same giveaway in Jacksonville last year, and they gave away a lot of medicine. And these, and the doctors is having a part of this organization of medical people that realize the need of a lot of people in our community. So, anybody that can go, no matter, of course, if you know you have to be adult, you can't be a child to go. You have to be adult to go get these medicines. So, we asking all those that will be out there. I won't be able to be there, because I'll probably be out of town during that time. Also, we are, um, was able to go to our convention and Commissioner Theron was saying about how nice it was. And we talked about this dangerous drug, but we, we've been having drugs in our community for a long time. But this is a drug that will snuff you out quick. And so, a lot of people dying from this opioid. And we had counties, we, we had counties from all, all, all the counties in the USA belong to this organization. But as Theron say, we had thirty-four.
Ten to five.
Counties that was there.
Ten to five.
So, we, we had a big crowd of people there, and I walked more than I walked in a long time. Got lost three or four times, we had two hotels that were drawing together for our meetings and everything. And it, it is wonderful to see all the commissioners in the United States working together. You're not gonna get everybody, but most of them is working together. And that's, that would make a dent in the problem that we are having. I know that our, uh, I went to sell probation options. And we just help everyone that say they, they want to be a part of this organization, because they see the need. Now, it, it, it might not, some of us might feel like it might not help us. But we need, the drug addicts on the street, and some of them don't care what happens. Some of them mind is gone mentally. We got a lot of mental health peoples on the street that's using this stuff also. And we don't realize just how bad it is. But we have a re-entry council, which a lot of people didn't want, but we finally got it. And I think it's the best thing could happen to Craven County. We seem to be on top of most of everything that's happening in other counties with this organization that we began this year. And we, and, and most of the people is really dedicated to working in this organization to make Craven County the best county is in the nation. And we have all, all our commissioners, our staff, we're working together to try and stop the trend of all these drugs in our community, because it's affecting everyone. And I always said that in this organization, they're gonna, this organization will be able to help people that wants to work to clean the records up. Now, we, we know we're not gonna make everybody want to work, because we're gonna have somebody that don't want to do right. For all the people that who wants the second chance, this what this is called, second chance act. People that wants a second chance, we have an opportunity to get a second chance. To start out where they, their education level will take them. And if you don't have the education to do the job, then you will be trained to do the job. And the people that give you these jobs will not penal, be penalized if someone don't work out. We, I mean, we realize it's gonna be somebody that's not gonna work out. But we're hoping that the majority of the people work out for a better life and be able to take care of their own family. They won't have to wait for nobody else to take care of their family. And I, I'm proud of this organization. I'm proud that our commissioners have worked together and have, uh, well, basically, we've been working really hard in trying to get this thing established and get trillion in there, trillion helping with these mental health people. The money, the money in trillion and, and the money in the government is for the health of the people. And we're trying to get some of that money, because the other states is getting that money, but finding out that Craven County not getting the money that it deserves. And I'm sure, I'm just so proud of this organization, because I also told a lot of people that we, we, we start kids out at eleven or twelve, maybe thirteen years old, training them in the way they should go. But a child, from, from the distance that I read, a child, when he get five years old, eighty percent of his brain is, is developed. So, all he have is twenty percent left that you got to work on after then. So, it, it behooves the people to train the kids early before they get to be teenagers. Because after they get to be teenagers, it's kinda hard to train. And I imagine someone, every, I imagine everybody got somebody in their house that they're not too proud of, that, that they won't do everything you say, they'll tell you what to do, some of them. So, we're just proud that this program gonna help out and gonna really put this county in the spotlight. We already in the spotlight, because we've been telling people what a great organization we have here in Craven County and how people are working together. I found a long time ago, people working together can accomplish everything. I, I found this out a long time ago. That's why I have them give up hope, because I know people, you always gonna have some people who don't want to do anything. Uh, you can believe that. You're gonna have them in every family, you're gonna have one or two. It might be down the line, might be grandchildren or great-great-grandchildren, but you're gonna find one or two in there that, that don't want to do anything. But they still are part of your family. One thing you can choose, my wife always tell me, one thing you can't choose your family, but you can choose your friends. So, you got to bear with your family and try to help them as much as you can. All right, that's, uh, I'm gonna stop talking about that right now, but I'm just, uh, gonna talk about, uh, the nursing home. I, we, we're talking a lot about the bedbugs in the nursing home, but I also know that we need to talk about the treatment that people are receiving at the nursing homes. We have a lot, lot of people, but the, the people that working at the nursing home, I, I don't fault them, because people working at the nursing home, they being overworked, because they don't have enough people there helping. They don't have enough people there working to support the nursing home. And so, a few people got to do everything, so they got to pick and choose who to work on. Now, if, if you got people going visiting, your parents or, or your friends or your associate, and they know you come and visit, they, they gonna wait on those people first. I, I, I know several times I've been out to the home, but after o'clock, some of the people still hadn't been changed. So, if they hadn't been changed, they, they hadn't eaten in the breakfast. So, we just want to keep right on talking about these nursing homes till we get these nursing homes in a condition that people can be happy in their last day. Now, these people have paid their dues, but I don't hear many people saying about all these dues these single citizens has paid. You got to sit in the nursing home, repair treatment and not the full treatment. I, I, I believe they need the full treatment in the nursing home. And I'm just so, so glad that it came to light, that one thing had happened, it come to light, that the bedbug is in there. But I'm hoping we go even further than the bedbug. I can go to some of these nursing homes and see how they look inside, and it's dangerous even go some of these nursing homes. You just about gotta take a chance and go on some of these nursing homes. More than bedbugs in there, you got bedbugs and there a whole lot more in there. That's the best, only thing they're zeroing in on now. I know a lot of you might not wanna hear about these single citizens in these nursing homes, but I might be in there one day. You might be in there one day. And they don't only have old people's in the nursing home, they got young people's there, there too. So, we want to make sure they have one of the best places that they're, that they can live out their life. And one more thing I had down here concerning what is going on, uh, and, uh, about our water plant now. Lot of people don't realize how important water is. I've been working, ever since I've been on the board, trying to talk about water. I've been saying anything lately about water, but water is very important. If you don't have no water, it's miserable. If you, if you have busted pipe, it's some kind of miserable. But that's, that, that, that's think about people that don't have any water. People upstate was, they was almost ready to go to court, because one, one county had bought water from another county, but the other county water beginning to get scarce, so they decided they weren't gonna get this county water, so they about ready to go to court, so they could sue these people, so they could receive some water. And water is very, water is a very important commodity that we need. If you don't believe it, you have to go one day without water. And that's think about several days without water. So, we need to thank the Lord that we got a water plant coming online, another. And we, we saw the light. We do, we do do some things good, we, we don't do everything bad. But we, we've been planning this water plant for years and years and years. And, and a lot of counties not in the good shape that we are in concerning water. So, we're just thanking the Lord that we was able to get on board before it's too late. That's all I have.
Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be relatively brief here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be relatively brief here. In July, the Allies for Cherry Point tomorrow had its, um, monthly meeting, and I just want to report on a couple legislative items. Uh, the General Assembly did appropriate three million dollars to build additional facilities to supplement the lift van maintenance and testing facility out at FRC East. And these facilities will improve the industrial base for the required lift van, which is one of the components of the F-35. Um, it's a tremendous statement from the state of North Carolina, suggesting this level of support towards our military here in eastern North Carolina. Um, we will be obligated to make certain that the Department of Navy and, has, uh, has got these monies under contract within a very short period of time, so the work to be done at the base is gonna be quite aggressive. Um, additionally, the legislature included two other state appropriations for the direct benefit at Cherry Point. In the final budget, one point two million dollars is allocated for the purchase of land uh, in proximity to the Vogue Field in Carteret County, and this will, of course, help mitigate encroachment on the outline field in Boe County and Cherry Point aviators, uh, when they're engaged in their training. Also, a million dollars was appropriated to help clean up of a brownfield site in Havelock, which I'm sure Commissioner Liner is very familiar with, that's adjacent to the air station and near the military family neighborhoods. These funds will assist Havelock in cleaning up the site and removing potential danger to neighbors, and it's been a long time, uh, problem for the community. Let's see here, additionally, there was an eighteen-month, uh, moratorium done on wind turbines, uh, that was put into some legislation towards the end of the General Assembly's, uh, session. And we think that that may well give enough time for considered study of, of these turbines moving forward. Then, I guess, uh, just a couple other little things. Congress did move forward with its authorizing and appropriations bills for this year for the Department of Defense, and they have allocated about fifteen point six million dollars towards the lift van itself as well. In fact, a great deal of money will be coming to Cherry Point. Nine of the thirteen military construction projects that are scheduled for Cherry Point have been, in one way or another, funded in this bill. So this is a very, very big accomplishment, um, for our community. I, um, last but not least, uh, last week, Tuesday, the New Bern Craven County Library Board did meet. Um, I would encourage each of the members that are sitting on their various library boards to take a look at the way in which the budgets are coming out. Now that our budget is complete, of course, the library's budgets are being put together. Look at the way in which things are being dealt with from their fund balance and how much money is being carried over from last year into this year's fund balance. I noticed that there was a significant uptick, uh, uptick in the amount of dollars that was coming in from last year into this year's budget, and I, I think at some point in time, we might want to have a discussion about that. So I would just ask each of you to just be mindful of that. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I'll be brief, but I, I want to thank each and every person that's in the audience tonight for coming out and spending, uh, a good part of three and a half hours with us. I believe all the commissioners appreciate your coming out, uh, and we look forward to you coming out quite often. But I just wanted to know that it has not been forgotten that you were here tonight. Thank you very much. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, the county manager and his staff for the work that they've done on this opioid. Uh, it's, it's a big, a big planning, uh, meeting, over a hundred and twenty people involved, between Gwen and Jack and Amber and Gene and Allison. A hundred and twenty letters going out is quite a lot of letters. And I just want to let them know that I appreciate what they did. I also just want to make one more statement about NACO. Uh, you know, many times I've heard that, uh, it's been said that, uh, it's an organization that helps the commissioners maybe, uh, do different things, but no one really knows what it's about. Well, some of the meetings that we attended, which lasts from forty-five minutes to, to a couple of hours, in some cases, until six o'clock at night, is, uh, crisis communication strategies, technology, uh, and to enhance finance for the county, criminal justice system, public health impacts, cost-saving strategies to improve county economic and energy resilience, investing in public funds, using technology to build, uh, a better county, and two great sessions on the opioid. So, you know, it's not that we're going away to have fun. This program goes from seven-thirty in the morning until six o'clock at night that we're in sessions and classes, learning things that we have to bring back here to help us run the county. And again, uh, I want to thank all the commissioners, and a motion to close.
Go move.
Second. Thank you very much.